Start our work session. Uh, the mayor is not here tonight, uh, so I will be in his steed. I think that's how you say it, right? I'm gonna, I probably, I don't know, was stead? Is that what it is?
Yeah, in his steed.
Being in his steed or definitely.
So, everybody hold on, it's gonna be a wild meeting tonight with that comment. It's terrible start.
I think you're doing fine your way.
It's been, it's been awhile. With that being said, uh, the mayor is finishing up a class that he's doing for his real estate license, so, um, he's gonna be missing tonight, so I'll try to hold this together as best I can, so. So, first thing on our work set, our pre-meeting, um, agenda is the stu- speed study for 12th and 13th. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Um, pursuant to a request on behalf of the council, uh, staff put together some information as it relates to data that we had recently, uh, compiled with regard to speeds on 12th and 13th. Um, and, uh, you know, the good news also is that, uh, uh, we, we had had data done, uh, a couple times fairly recently. In fact, I would say maybe even as much as twice in the last three years or whatever, if I, if I remember correctly. Um, so we've got a good set of data to review with you tonight. We've got some conclusions that we would offer for your consideration, and, uh, indeed, if you have other needs or direction for us tonight, uh, feel free to, uh, give us that, and we'll move forward accordingly. Uh, in that regard, if I could defer to the police department, I'd appreciate, appreciate that.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, council, we brought Sergeant Bullard, who's in charge of our traffic division here, to kinda present that information as we put it together for you.
Thank you. Sergeant?
Vice Mayor, council, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, so I, we prepared a memo that I believe you've all received. I'm not gonna completely rehash that memo, but there are some bullet points that I wanna cover, uh, that do underscore the, the tone of that memorandum. Uh, we do, as the traffic sergeant, we do receive complaints for speed violations citywide, um, routinely from citizens in our city. And some of those complaints over the last, my tenure in that office as the traffic sergeant over the last four years have centered around 12th and 13th streets. I will say that, uh, the number of complainants for those complaints were actually small, but they were rather loud in their complaining. Um, and, and I understand, um, as a, as a homeowner myself, when I look at the traffic that travels in front of my street, or in front of my house on my street, that, uh, I'm very protective of my neighborhood, and, and I understand where they're coming from. So, as a result of those complaints that we received, uh, the traffic team uses a variety of means for measuring and, uh, confirming or denying whether those speeding issues actually exist. We use, uh, equipment that basically their radar device that counts the number of vehicles that go by and catalogs how fast they're going. We also use speed trailers, which also capture the same information and actually visually display the speed as the vehicle's passing by. And then we use officer observation as well, uh, my, getting boots on the ground with my team actually in the area trying to enforce the speeds in the area. Um, when it comes to 12th and 13th streets specifically, um, we had approximately four measurements that were taken over the last four years. Unfortunately, three years of that data was corrupted, and I wasn't able to specifically provide that information to you, but having viewed those reports in the past, I can confirm that the, the same information was corroborated by the last study that we had done in October of 2020. Um, and that study basically showed that the 85th percentile of the traffic traveling through 12th and 13th street centered around 31 to 32 miles per hour. So, not a significant deviation from the speed limit of 30 miles per hour. 2.6% of those vehicles were traveling five miles per hour or more over the posted speed limit, and 12 of, 12 vehicles were found to be traveling in excess of 65 miles per hour, which is pretty significant when we start looking at that data. Unfortunately, when we look at those flyers, is what we call them, statistical anomalies, they were very sporadic, and we couldn't nail down an exact time and day of the week when those things were occurring where we could set, uh, enforcement officers out to try and, uh, catch those specific violators. Um, after the sp- this jammer speed study was done, we deployed the speed trailer, which basically corroborated that information, again putting the 85th percentile at 31 miles an hour. And then my traffic team was deployed into those areas on 12th and 13th streets specifically between Walcott and CY, uh, to see what their, uh, physical observations were. In two weeks of enforcement activity, we wrote 10 citations, and only eight of those were actually for speed. The other two were for other equipment violations. So, when it comes to boots on the ground, spending time in that area specifically for enforcement, um, it was agreed by the traffic team that there were other places in the city where our time was better spent, uh, slowing people down and, and providing that educational basis on, uh, and getting those people to slow down. And to underscore that, basically, uh, from crash information from the state, the intersection of 12th and Walcott, when we looked at statistics over the last year specifically, came in at number 10 on our top 10 list. Number one wa- on our list was Second and Wyoming, which is the busiest intersection in the state of Wyoming, and number two was at CY and, and, um, Wyoming Boulevard. Currently, uh, my traffic division recognizes two high visibility enforcement areas. One of those is, uh, the area of CY between Wyoming Boulevard and Wolf Creek, where in the last, uh, two years, we've had 58 crashes that were catalogued, and we, we do routinely stop people doing in twen- in excess of 20 miles an hour in that stretch of roadway. Um, the other location where we spend a lot of time enforcing is on both sides of Wyoming Boulevard on Second Street, because we have routinely also in those areas, uh, speeding violations, sometimes in excess of 25 miles an hour over the speed limit. So, when it comes to, um, uh, as the traffic division, where we find our best enforcement efforts, um, unfortunately, the, the corridor of 12th and 13th street ranks down there pretty low. Any questions?
Any questions for Sergeant Bullard? Councilmember Nail?
You, so I'm assuming, based on these numbers, you're not recommending anything different at this time?
Correct. Um, you know, we've looked at traffic calming studies. In fact, I believe about 10 years ago, you may be able to correct me on that, there was some traffic calming measures that were actually put into place on 12th and 13th streets where we widened, uh, the curbs coming out. We put on unique curb cuts that were kind of temporary, um, and I don't believe that those were effective. They were removed very quickly. Um, going back to the, the memorandum, um, I think that one of the, the key concerns that, uh, council had, uh, questioned was the number of rollover crashes that were occurring in that area, and when I look at the, the crash data in that 12th and 13th street corridor, um, we don't see speed-related crashes occurring there. What we actually see are right-angle collisions, where basically T-bone type collisions, those rank the top of the list by a rather significant margin, um, where basically it's indicating that, uh, stop signs or stoplights are being run along that corridor. Um, and then the, the other question was as to rollover crashes, why those are occurring, and if they were speed-related. I actually have two crash reconstruction officers that, that work for me. Uh, the, the three of us sat down and pored over the data, and basically, they come to the conclusion that it was not speed-related specifically, uh, where we're seeing those rollover crashes on 12th and 13th streets. They're actually caused by low-speed right-angle collisions that's causing the vehicle to slide or go into a spin, and they're either tripping on a curb, or a crack, or a manhole cover, or the tires are deflating, and they're hitting their rims and going over, um, because of that. So, we're not seeing speed-related issues with the crashes. It's, it's more of a stoplight, stop sign, and that's something that we can take that data and, and again, go into those areas and try to enforce, but those are, again, are sporadic, and the, the corridors where they are are pretty narrow and, and hard to get visual, uh, manifestations of for enforcement. But as, as far as your question, Mr. Nail, no, I don't think that we need to do anything different. I know that the traffic calming measures that were put in place, um, 10 years ago, actually, I think, caused more significant roadway, uh, impediment, and in those right-angle crashes where, uh, we're seeing those low, low-speed cra- crashes, right-angle crashes where vehicles are getting put into a slide or a spin, those traffic calming measures were actually detrimental and causing more, more tripping hazards.
One more follow-up, if I may?
You bet.
Have you, uh, while you've been patrolling these areas heavier, those are the two corridors that we specifically, uh, passed ordinance for folks to use the, um, parkways?
Correct.
And I'm, I'm curious if you've noticed a, a drop in incidences, I guess, or if more people are utilizing those?
Too soon for us to say anything on that. I would be very interested as time goes on to see what those statistics look like. We're still in the process of really starting to enforce that parkway, uh, parking. As far as I know, only one citizen who lives on 13th street has actually applied for and been granted a permit, and nobody else has yet. So, we're still working an uphill battle as far as enforcing that and getting those people in compliance with that, that parkway parking measure on 12th and 13th street. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Gamroth?
Thank you, sub mayor, mayor sub. I don't know how to respect your position at the pro temp.
Pro temp.
Um, and thank you Sergeant Bullard, Bullard, for the, uh, information. Uh, I appreciate you sharing, um, you know, the information, not only about 12th and 13th street, but about some of the other intersections. It's very interesting to me that Second and Wyoming Boulevard is the busiest in the state, so I'm gonna tuck that one away. Um, uh, that being said, um, uh, Second and Wyoming Boulevard and CY and Wyoming Boulevard, they're very big intersections, kinda wide open. Um, I've never lived on 12th and 13th street, but what concerns me about those areas is how dense they are with residential, and, so, um, I appreciate the fact that there's probably other areas, well, there, there are clearly other areas where there's more infractions occurring and where, uh, your team is more successful in, uh, you know, curbing unwanted behavior, but is there anything we can do, uh, to address these flyers, as you put it? Um, I was, um, really surprised to see that, uh, you know, despite the fact that most people are staying in that 85th, uh, percentile, that we had like, uh, what was it, a dozen of them going over 65, and then some Vin Diesel wannabe going nearly 100 miles an hour, like, that's, that's super scary. I, I can't even imagine what it would look like for a car going 100 miles an hour down one of those streets, so.
I agree.
Um, is there any, you know, what, what's the cost of a, of a cam that is able to, you know, take license plate pictures and stuff? Is, is the cost of that so exorbitant that it wouldn't be justified to catch these folks?
Unfortunately, uh, traffic cameras are not something that is part of Wyoming statute or the city ordinance at this time, um, and that's something that I think that, uh, the state legislature is looking toward. I've heard some, uh, rumblings of that. Did you wanna speak to any of that?
Vice Mayor, council, I, I don't mean to intrude, uh, but I think it's, it's, in full transparency, I think we need to be aware that that's a small number of those so-called outliers or flyers, um, on there, but, uh, when we look at some of the times on those, sometimes those are consistent with our own emergency vehicles responding in the areas. So, if you subtract ambulances that are responding to, uh, a medical event, and you subtract our own officers who are running lights and sirens to a legitimate, uh, emergency, that number gets very, very decreased, and, and so what I would try to portray to council is those, those exist, and some of those are legitimate, you know, scofflaws. They are legitimately speeding, you know, we're not the ones driving 100 miles an hour on there, that's somebody else. Um, but those are so infrequent, it's almost impossible to, uh, to have a deterrent effect on that. Not only occurs on those streets, but on virtually every street that we have. Periodically, you're, you're all at home, and you hear that motorcycle or car rev up its engine. You hear those things in virtually every area of the city, but once you subtract the emergency responses from this small number of flyers, you're really down to a small number of offenders.
Councilmember Kathy?
Along the lines of what you were just saying, chief, in that two-week period, how many people traveled those streets?
That, I, I don't have that direct number for you.
It's over 32,000.
Yeah, it was.
So, you have 12 out of 32,000. I'm not gonna spend any money, time, or energy on 12 out of 32,000. Just, as you were saying, it's insignificant, chief.
Vice Mayor, council, we in no way whatsoever want to minimize the concerns of the, the citizens that live and work and play in those areas. Those are legitimate concerns. We continue to prioritize our, our efforts at crash reduction. We have areas in our city that, that we're much more, they're more demanding of the, the seriousness of the crashes and the injuries and the amount of damage that is occurring, we're, we're forced to prioritize. So, without minimizing our citizens' concerns, we acknowledge that there are violations of the, of the speed there, but these streets are specifically engineered, and that engineering is working. Those 85th percentiles are highly desirable. That shows that the vast, if we, if we took the, the speed limit signs down and didn't even have any there, you would still have the same traffic flow. That is a safe, overall, a very stra- safe section of the roadway. From the citizen's point of view, it's been my experience, I can stand right next to them, and they'll go, "That one's speeding," and we'll go, "Boop," and turns out they're not. "Well, that one's speeding." Boop, no, they're not, you know, and they, and it really is shocking to them, 'cause their perception of, of speed sometimes is, is inaccurate, or it's bit more based upon perception of the type of vehicle, the age of the driver, things of that nature. So, I'm not minimizing those concerns, they're legitimate concerns. This is a matter of prioritization of our available resources where we can make the most difference in reducing the harm of crashes in our community.
Anybody else? Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Ladies? Sergeant, can I recognize you super fast? Sergeant Bullard? Did I hear about you becoming a lieutenant next week?
Yes.
Is that her? I just wanted to say congratulations. I've known Sergeant Bullard for 30 years. I grew up with Jeff, and, um, just a wonderful human being and a great police officer, so congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
From all of us, of course.
Thank you very much. Goodnight, everybody.
Okay, on to Casper 311. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We have a, another follow-up item that, uh, we wanted to bring to your attention as it relates to some concerns that are legitimate, uh, with regard to follow-up that would appear to be several months late in its, in its, uh, in its reporting, if you will. Um, yeah, we, we did, uh, identify a problem, and, uh, we actually were able to recreate it, and in so doing, we sent out another array and bevy of emails saying, "Hey, we just followed up on your item, and it's taken care of." Uh, so, if I could defer some time to, uh, Michael, to, uh, to walk us through what those issues are and what we're doing to get it mitigated and, and fixed, so we don't have those problems again, uh, I'd appreciate that, but I do think we, we should probably have another larger conversation with respect to, uh, the role that 311 can play in our outreach to our community and, and so on, but we don't need to do that this evening, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you, council. Um, as the city manager stated, uh, we, we have rolled out 311, we rolled it out back at the beginning of this year. We've received approximately 1,000 requests. A good chunk of those, uh, were related to the snowplow. Almost 600 of them were repeated, were, were related to the snowplow requests in, in March, during that big storm that we had this last March. So, uh, approximately, of those 1,000, approximately 800 people submitted email addresses with, with their requests, and, uh, back in October, we inadvertently encountered a bug with the software that, when, when that bug was triggered, it sent emails out to those 800 people, uh, on two separate occasions on the si- the same morning on, in October, and I'd like to note that those emails that were sent out in October, and again, when we diagnosed the error a couple weeks ago, those, those were not the initial emails that were sent. Those, those people that had submitted their requests, and that, when their requests were closed, did actually receive emails when, when their request was closed. These were actually follow-up emails that, uh, you know, of course, didn't need to be sent, but because of the bug in the software, they, they were sent. So, as, as an example, person A submitted a snowplow request in March. When that request was closed in late March, they received an email. Then they received two more in October, and then one more a week, week and a half ago, whatever, when we, uh, re-diagnosed that issue. So, that, that is the cause of that issue. Uh, we, we've diagnosed it, there's a fix, we're, we have it in our test environment, and we haven't found any problems with, with the test environment, so we plan on updating the live environment with that fix later this week. Um, and then, moving forward, as we stated in the last paragraph of this email, and Carter stated, we'll have a further discussion later, we'll be focusing on, uh, on a new app that will meld two existing apps together, so, but I won't get into that one right now.
Questions for Michael? Councilmember Gamroth?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That feels more comfortable, I'll just go that way. Um, and thank you, Michael, for the information. Um, perhaps this isn't related to, I, I guess I don't personally understand the difference between the two apps, but, uh, I know we're talking now about citizens submitting things to the city, but I heard a lot of feedback from constituents in regards to the specific purpose tax about just not knowing about it, um, and them liking other systems. I heard, uh, uh, several people use the example of the Natrona County School District texting system to notify people. Uh, I heard from a lot of people that really liked that system, and so I don't, uh, it, can this app, uh, if people were to download it on their phone, can it be used just to push out, you know, emergency notifications or interests, uh, you know, uh, information of special interest to citizens, so that that can be a reliable way for people that wanna follow the affairs of the city? That's a reliable way for them to get necessary information, or is it not really built for that purpose? Thank you.
Mayor, council, Councilman Gamroth, we do, the, one of the apps that we currently have does have the ability to do, push notifications through, through the app. One of the goals that, uh, council has identified, uh, one of the deliverables in there is to look at, at alternative text-based communication notification systems, so that is something that we'll be investigating further and bringing more options forward to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Uh, the only other thing that's on our pre-agenda is the agenda review. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to add under, under this item.
Okay. Anybody have anything they wanna mention or anything? Okay. All right, we'll take about a four-minute recess before the official meeting. Thank you. Before we begin, um, couple reminders, uh, please silence your cellphones at this time, and also, I am, uh, sitting in place of the mayor tonight, who is, um, out, um, on a previous engagement, so I'll be doing the meeting tonight. I now call the November 16th, 2021 regular council meeting to order. The chair to entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Mayor Freel.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Nail, seconded by Councilmember Quest.
Nope.
Nope, sorry, my bad. Give me a second. Councilmember Pollock, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Council meetings are all televised, um, are televised on cable channel 192. Please, uh, join the, I'm gonna invite the Casper Youth Council to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you guys wanna come right there to the podium? I'm gonna put you guys on the spot there. Thank you so much, guys. You can start when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Casper Youth Council. Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the minutes of the November 2nd, 2021 regular council meeting is published in the Casper Star Tribune on November 10th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Kathy, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Amendments? Discussion? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the minutes of the November 9, 2021 special council meeting is published in the Casper Star Tribune on November 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Anga Bretson, seconded by Councilmember Nail. Amendments? Discussion? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the minutes of the November 9, 2021 executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Gamroth, seconded by Councilmember Quest. Sorry, Councilmember Pollock. Amendments? Discussion?
Just one note, uh, did we send out, or I did not receive, the executive session minutes from last week? I don't know if they were sent. I generally get them, but I did not get them.
I thought they were sent, but they were sent.
Okay.
Yeah. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the November 16th, 2021, bills and claims, as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Pollock, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, we do have a bright spot in our community, um, and tonight, we'd like to welcome Dr. Madeline Stout. Dr. Stout's, uh, children, Janelle and Erin, inspired her, uh, to look into adopting soldiers' graves throughout Natrona County, similar to what the people of France have gone, uh, done for US soldiers buried there. Her research has uncovered over 1,260 soldiers' graves, including a soldier from the Spanish-American Civil War. She will be working with the Civil War, uh, Civil Air Patrol to mark all the graves of the soldiers' graves, and hopes she will inspire volunteers to adopt soldiers' graves for families who cannot care for them. Um, Dr. Stout, if you'd like to say a couple words, I'll have you come forward and present you with a certificate.
Hi. Um, this is Janelle, I love. Um, I have just completed, well, I have completed the Highland Park Cemetery and found the graves there. It has been very interesting, as he said, uh, Spanish-American war back to then, there's even one gentleman who was a guide for, uh, and so it's been really enlightening to walk these graves and read about them, read about, uh, how many that are there, not only the veterans, but we also have, uh, some soldiers that were killed in action during World War I, World War II, the Spanish-American war, and ones that are remembered that are not buried here, but they are buried as in one, his name is Gerald Castle, and he is buried in St. Paul, France, at the American, uh, Memorial Cemetery, and it has just been really enlightening, a lot of fun, and I look forward to finishing it up, and yes, I have your jump drive, I just forgot to bring it.
Dr. Stout, would you wanna come up here? Come around this way. So, I just want to take a minute to, uh, offer this in, uh, significant, uh, certificate of recognition for Dr. Madeline Stout. It says, "For honoring our United States soldiers in Natrona County for marking their graves and recruiting volunteers to care for their graves. Madeline's commitment is a reminder of how each of us can find a way to thank those who have served our great country. The Casper City Council extends our sincere appreciation for your exemplary work. Signed, Stephen K. Freel, Mayor."
Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Stout.
Thank you.
You wanna say, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, Dr. Stout, thank you so much, and, um, I just wanted to remind anyone else that comes up to speak tonight, please use a microphone, these are recorded.
Thank you.
You want to say, oh yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Stout, thank you so much, and I just wanted to remind anyone else that comes up to speak tonight, please use a microphone, these are recorded, and they're on television, and when you're not speaking into that mic, the people in the general public that are listening to our meetings can't hear anything you're saying. So, but anyway, thank you so very much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we have communications from persons present in the chambers. Couple things, we invite those to come forward who wish to speak to the council. As stated on the first page of the event, the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address, direct all questions to the mayor, in this case, me. No personal attacks on the staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to any personnel matters, those will be referred to our City Manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by the City Council. Presentation will be limited to five minutes, and the duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public carions or ordinance each have their own comment period, so please hold your comment until that time we reach those ordinances that we talk about. I do think there's several speakers here from St. Anthony's School, so I would ask a couple things. I'm going to be pretty stingy on the five minutes, you'll see it up here on the board, and so, making sure that we stick to that, I'll give you, kind of, if you're kind of going close to that, I'll tell you to start wrapping it up. Also, if there's a duplication, I'm going to be pretty stingy on this duplication. If you have something, and it's the same thing over, we really try to push to say not to have duplications of what needs to be said, and so, just for time awareness, so, please come up, anybody. Yeah, you come up here, Pete.
Pete Maxwell, 3764 West 38th Street, here on behalf of St. Anthony's School. Here as a concerned parent, and also a board member at St. Anthony's. First, I'd like to start by saying that I respect the Johnson Group and appreciate the jobs they provide for our community, along with their great establishments. I'm also a liquor license holder, so I respect the time, effort, and financial investment these projects take. With that said, I know the importance of reaching out to schools and neighbors before putting a liquor establishment in a sensitive area. I learned this the hard way, by the tune of $300,000, by not reaching out to a school before I tried to acquire a liquor license. In 2016, the city had a quote-unquote "free" liquor license up for grabs. I put a lot of money and effort and time into putting a presentation together for said license. Unfortunately, my project was not chosen, and the liquor license was awarded to the Yellowstone Garage. When I asked a few members of council post-meeting what were the reasons for not choosing my concept, they told me that I had not reached out to the Montessori School about the plans for my project. So when it came time to purchase a full retail license at full price, I made sure to reach out to the Montessori School first and address their concerns. As a parent and school board member, I am now on the opposite side of that. This establishment advertises bar and liquor store open daily at 6:00 a.m., so it is a day-drinking establishment, with kids coming and going each day within feet of this establishment, it makes me very concerned. I'm not sure what we can do at this point in the game. I feel like the school was not made aware of this project until just weeks ago, and I feel like the Johnson Group should have reached out to us. I'd be more than happy to help in any future dialogue, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Maxwell? Yeah, go ahead.
Pete, thank you, and I understand the concern. I will tell you, I spent quite a bit of my day today over there, because I knew you guys were coming, and I wanted to be informed with what was going on. John's been very gracious, and I toured the entire facility. I can tell you this, that may help put you at ease. Ninety-nine percent of the people that will patron that business will park out front, and there is a hallway that leads to the liquor store and the bar. There is only six or eight spots out back in that area, not the area by the school, which he does let the school use when they have functions going on, but there are six to eight spots out back that will be used for employees, not for customers. And one of my, he did take my suggestion today, I said, "You know, John, I think you could really put this to bed if you put a solid fence across the back." And he today agreed to do so. So the only time that door will actually be used, in my opinion, after looking at it, is for the smokers, when they want to go outside and have a cigarette or a cigar, they'll go out those back doors. But that'll be protected now by a solid fence going across, I don't even know what road that is, but it's right in front of the-
H-Y.
H-Y, and it's right in front of the gentleman's house that came to us, and then the school will be protected by the other cars. So, as far as loitering, drinking, drunks outside, I just don't think that's going to be an issue, and I would like to remind the school that there was a liquor store in that establishment, and I understand liquor store and a bar are different, but with 99% of their traffic coming in and out of the front door, I don't think the school will ever even notice it, to be perfectly honest with you. And I live in that neighborhood, so I do have care, just like you do, but I think John's doing literally everything he can, and he's willing to take even more suggestions if you folks have them. He's been very gracious. When I mentioned the solid fence, he jumped right on it today and said, "Consider it done." So, if you have any suggestions, you're welcome to reach out to me if you don't know John or aren't, I guess on a first-name basis with him, you're certainly welcome to reach out to me, and I will take those concerns to him, and I can promise you, he's been gracious, he'll be very good at looking at anything you have to offer him. So, that's all I have for you.
Thanks.
Great. Anything else? No, go ahead, Councilmember.
Sure. I mean, I have, well, maybe it's more appropriate after we've heard everyone's comments, because we have a council public comment period after that, I'll hang on, but thank you, Pete, for showing up and for giving us your input, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Pete.
I did want to say while we're waiting, where that back door is where those folks will go out to smoke is actually all the way down on the end where the semis used to back in to unload, so it's quite a ways from the school. The business closest to the school's EA's hardware, so there is going to be a buffer there for you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Members of Council. Elizabeth Grill, I live off of Mountain Way, Casper, it's basically intersection of Casper Mountain and Outer Drive. I too am a parent of what I call little humans, five and seven, so they're very, they're very small. As, I was notified by this late, and actually, for what I do as a profession, maybe I should be a little bit more educated as far as the liquor license permits and things of that nature. However, and knowing that, moving forward, likely, not much we can do at this stage. Just a couple of considerations that I would pose to council as a parent. While there are limited amounts of daycare facilities and/or schools that are located next to what I would traditionally call a bar, that would permit day drinking if desired. Crest Hill, it's located across from Primetime, which is, if you're familiar with that area, the park, it's not only across from Poplar, but a fairly large parking lot, okay? Crest Hill, I think, is just kind of mushed in there by grandfather, it's difficult for kids to get across. There's Kids Works, that's right next to Galloways, however, the access is fairly distinct. I do know kids can walk to Galloways and part, and enjoy bowling, but again, the access between those two, to Kids Works versus that location, is fairly distinct. Montessori backs up to Mr. Maxwell's establishment, the gaslight, but my understanding, I'm not as familiar with that area, but I do believe that access, again, is very different. Montessori also doesn't go from K or preschool all the way up to eighth grade, and I think because of St. Anthony's, the way that it's structured, that facility and the school is structured, they host numerous events going all the way into the afternoon and to into the evening. My concern is because we don't have public transportation, so most, all of the children are transported by parents, and those are the two main access points off of the H-Y Avenue, the throughways right there through that main parking lot. I did take a closer look as far as that corner, as far as parking and the access for what I understand will be for this establishment, which makes me feel a little bit better that it's not dumping out right into that intersection. Just for future consideration, looking at your zoning ordinances, you do have commercial, general commercial, which permits for full liquor licenses, retail, things of that nature, but it's in your conditional uses ordinances that actually require that 300-foot distance from gambling. Maybe just for consideration, and I do apologize, because this is not an area that I actually researched for the city of Casper, nor have really worked a lot with the retail or with liquor licenses. However, just for consideration, in the future, maybe take a look at that, because I don't, to be frank, I don't think that there's a huge difference between a full-time open bar and a gambling establishment. And also, just when you're considering these applications, too, just the layout and the access, that does make me certainly feel a little bit better as far as the parking lot and the structure, and how that is, the main access would be a little bit farther from the turn-ins to that St. Anthony's parking lot. But again, I think St. Anthony's is a little unique in the sense that because it goes all the way through eighth grade, and all the fundraiser events that go on throughout the year, that's really the hub for all of those events, which can extend far into the night, and just in my experience, I'm not as familiar with what this bar is going to look like, I don't get the chance to go out very often, but in my experience, there is a more tendency to have issues or disturbances around bars. It's just, it's just what happens. So, just for future consideration, I think that would be appreciated, and I think certainly on behalf of St. Anthony's. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Grill? Councilmember Gamroth.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, I guess I didn't catch your name.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, and thank you, Elizabeth, for your comments. I think you bring up a legitimate point about the gambling 300-foot proximity, and, you know, whether there's a difference between a gambling establishment and a bar or liquor establishment. We've asked city staff to put together some materials so that we can, at least me personally, I'm curious and informing myself further on this issue, and my guess is, I appreciate you acknowledging that now is maybe not the ideal time to be having this discussion in this specific instance, but my guess is, we're going to talk about whether that part of the ordinance needs some expansion or fine-tuning in the future, so I appreciate your comments and, you know, I think those concerns and comments are legitimate. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you so much.
My name's Jody Olson, I live on 12298 Poison Spider Road. I'm a concerned parent. I've got both my children in St. Anthony's School, out of public school, and then St. Anthony's is the best thing that ever happened to them. Now, to say, obviously, I've been to C-Y Discount Liquor, I buy booze from there, I'm not saying it's not a bad thing whatsoever. The thing that concerns me is that we have a day-drinking bar next to a school that uses the same road. I understand people are going to be parking in front, but then we have the smokers going out back, is what you're saying, protected by fence, I get that, you know, like I said, I'm actually a smoker too, I get it, but we still get the atmosphere of the bar next to a school. You know, no matter what, if you go in there at noon, you've had a bad day, you're going in there, you pound down stuff till four, three o'clock in the afternoon, you're trying to rush out of there, the same time kids are getting picked up. I mean, obviously, we're not supposed to drink and drive, but it happens. So I just, I don't understand this, to an extent, like I said, I'm on both sides of it, but why, it's like we're creating an atmosphere for trouble, just starting right there, and that's the biggest thing that just scares me, honestly. And, like I said, it's probably too late, I wasn't made aware of this, I just found out about, I thought there was a liquor store going in there, great, it's not open at 6:00 in the morning, when our kids are going to school. So, and that part just really concerns me, because, I mean, obviously, we have DUIs, we have drunk driver accidents, it happens, you know, we have bars, we have people that go out and have a good time, but how long before it happens right there in front of the school? And that's all it is, because it's a matter of just time. It's not when it's, or it's not if it's going to happen, it's when, with just creating that environment right there next to the school. So, I'm just, like I said, I'm all for it, I understand the C-Y Discount Liquor, backdoor bar, want to move into a new place, I don't blame them one bit, just why would we put it right next to a school, especially a day-drinking establishment? That just makes no sense to me.
Questions? Councilmember Nail.
I concur, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, I do. One of the things I think that needs to be understood is, this isn't a choice the city made, this is a man who has dumped, by my guess, $2.5 to $3 million into that building. It's certainly not going to look like a bar neighborhood, that's just not going to happen, and it's too classy, it's too nice. The building is, not saying the customers are. But this is not something that the city chose or put in place, this was a, another one of our constituents who owns a construction company that decided that he wanted to put this in there, and he went through planning and zoning and came to the council and it passed. I do understand your concerns, I pray to God that what you're saying never happens, for anyone that has children, for anyone, period. I just hope that it never happens, and I, I'd like to think that with our police force and, you know, that we just have a better grip on the DUI situation, I know that's maybe not the fairest thing to say, but I can tell you, the church and the school on C-Y have Franks right across the street, she mentioned two others that have bars right next to them. I think in this day and age in our world, it's, especially when we're on one of the busiest commercial streets, not only in the city but in the state, it's really hard to get away from, and they are 300 feet away, you can measure it from where the actual bar is. But like I said, 99% of that activity should be out the front in the parking lot and going out onto C-Y. That's not to say they're not going to come out and go by the school, it's not to say we're not going to have an accident, I pray we don't, but I just want to make it very, very clear that this is not the city putting this in, it wasn't our decision to do this, someone came to us, and they are within the parameters of the current zoning laws of the city. So, you know, realistically, there's not a lot as a city council that we can do about that. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Well, that's kind of, yeah, that stinks, you know, period, and it sounds like, I mean, I see all you guys nodding and agreeing, you know, it's not when, it's, or it's not if, it's when, and that's, like you said, it passed the council to start with. If there was a different way, a different, you know, road access into there besides the same one that is shared, as she was mentioning, you know, of all the events that we have, all the stuff that goes on there at the school, because it's off the side, it's just, it's a recipe for disaster.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Come up, Henry, if you want.
Henry Gronenberg, 3421 Valley Road. I'm here to represent John Johnson and the Johnson Restaurant Group. John unfortunately is out of town, he'd love to be here, because he obviously knows what he's, what he wants to do and what he is doing, and I appreciate the comments from, we appreciate the comments from the concerned parents and such, they're all well-taken. Couple things, you kept referring to it as a bar, and I'm not going to disagree, there's going to be alcohol served inside the bar, but there's also a liquor store that goes along with that. The bar itself, the name is Backdoor Lounge, and granted, where they're at right now, it's an older building, it's been around for a long time, John's wishes that it's going to be a lounge similar to, let's use the vintage over there where Popular Spirits is, and we're going to be having a food component in there, where we'll be serving hamburgers and hot dogs and chicken, and things on a grill, things in a fry, I'm sure it's all healthy food, but, and that'll be in there also, and right now, the comment was made that we're opening up at 6:00, and that is true, we are opening at 6:00. We do have some patrons there, and we find that the patrons that do show up, or the customers that do show up, are end-of-day shift workers, night shift workers are coming in. We have some of the men- We have some of the medical community comes in, some of the, the first responders, hospital workers and such, and they come in, and to them, it's no different than us going, or anybody going out after work at five o'clock or 5:30 and having a drink with a social friend or with friends and that. So, it's going to be a social environment. It's not scheduled to be a rowdy bar. It's not scheduled to be a bar that, and even CY right now, I think if you go in there, it's pretty quiet, and it's, we'll just be moving the concept over there. It'd be a little bit bigger square footage. Now, the majority of the Backdoor Lounge will be after school. Sure, you're going to have some daytime people there, but they're in there to visit with their friends and obviously have a drink or two. The majority of the access, we feel, is going to come off of CY Avenue because coming in on HY Street, or, and I forget the street, name of the street that goes alongside the school, is not the best access because you're going to have Ace Hardware on the west side of that property, Once Upon a Child in the middle of the property, and then the liquor store and the backdoor lounge in the back. And the front entrance is going to be your main entrances on that one. They can access the lounge from, through the liquor store, or there'll be a separate door that goes down a hallway that will get to the, get to the bar itself or to the lounge itself. I did measure today the distance, because I know that there's some concern about distance, and the distance from the, where the back door is going to be on the back of the building to the stop sign, which is the street across the street from the parking lot, is 120 yards approximately. So, it's 360 feet or so. I know it's, the number 300 came up a while ago. John's goal has always been to be a good neighbor, and I think Councilman Nell, when he talked with John, found that there was, that John is always willing to work. We have obviously multiple establishments in town, and I don't believe that any of our establishments, not to say that we don't ever have a problem, but they're usually family-oriented, they're good places to go, people we hope enjoy their experiences there. And this would be one of the same things, that people would go into the lounge and enjoy, have a social gathering with friends, and just have a good time, and a careful good time.
About 45 seconds, Henry.
That's about all I have to say.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gronenberg? Thanks, Henry.
Hello, I'm Suzette Fresquez, 2232 Lennox Avenue. I am a concerned parent as well. My concern, you know, I know you guys said that there, there's going to be a limit of how people in the back in the parking. I'm not only concerned about that, I'm also concerned about the people who are day-drinking, and you don't, there's no saying whether these people are going to get belligerent or whatnot, roaming, roaming the streets, walking around, because you know that when someone gets to that point, there's no stopping them. But my biggest concern is with how close it is to the school, our kids are out there all, almost throughout the whole day. We have several different recesses. Like I said, there's preschool all the way to eighth grade, so my concern is, if we do have someone rocking the streets, roaming, our kids are exposed to that. And as parents, I'm sure you guys don't want your children to see those things, so I'm just concerned that our children will be exposed to things they shouldn't have to see when they're at school. That's not something we should, as parents, have to worry about. And not only that, you just, the violence, the violence. I don't want my child to see someone cursing on the street or hearing that, you know, the school's their safe spot, and that's what I expect it to be. So, just to know that they could be possibly exposed, so that scares me. Just like our other concerned parent, we can't say it's going to happen, it's not going to happen, it's just a matter of when. So, I'm just going to kind of revert back to what he said. I don't want to repeat, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Kathy.
Do you take your kids to Walmart?
I mean, yes.
Do you take your kids downtown?
Yes.
If you take your kids downtown, they're exposed to the homeless population, they're exposed to the drunks downtown. If you go to Walmart, you hear cursing and violent acts all through there. What's the difference between you're taking them to those places and that is the world today? I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying that that is the environment, and you're already exposing your kids to things that now you want Mr. Johnson to try to protect them from. And that's asking an awful lot of somebody.
Well, the difference is...
And as far as the traffic is concerned, I understand as well that you're concerned about the inebriated driver, but there's been more traffic there when Safeway was open than there will probably be with any of these establishments that are going back in there. So, I know some of the people have asked about traffic studies. That's why there was no traffic study done. There was a major retail store there prior to this establishment coming in. So, I mean, a lot of these things seem to be that you're asking Mr. Johnson to protect kids from what they're being exposed to by parents in other situations around our community. And to me, that's a bit of an unfair expectation of another business owner.
Okay, so I could see where you're, what you're saying, but my, like I said, my concern is, school's a safe place for our children, and my whole concern was, is if these people who are drinking are roaming around, which you say, no one said that it's not going to happen or it's going to happen, but if it does happen, our kid's safe place is no longer a safe place, and that's my concern. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, couple things why we still have the parents here that I want to try to address, that we can do it here really quickly, a person's present because it looks like nobody else. One is, I want to bring in our city manager for a minute. I know a lot of people have mentioned that they were not aware until just weeks ago that this was taking place. I guess, I'd like to have either some direction on this, or, because I know we'd been working on this for quite some time, and I know the city's policy for notifications that go out. I know emails were sent out, I know emails were back and forth between the school and us, you know, so I understand that this has been happening at least since April, maybe beyond that. So, I'd like to make some clarification and maybe say, hey, if this is, you know, misnomered, let's, then let's get that fixed to make sure. So, Carter?
Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council, I'll try to answer those questions, and by all means, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I don't, be sure to redirect me and so on. As it relates to notice, with respect to this property not changing zoning classification, the notice requirement is certainly a lot less, particularly since all of these businesses are compliant with the current classification, which I think is a C2 if I remember correctly. And so, in that regard, the notice that we put in, you know, the newspaper and on our website and so forth satisfies the requirements of the law. Again, if this were changing its zoning classification, or we did have a gambling establishment coming in, there'd be different degrees of notice being required. That was not the case. As it relates to communications that we received, we did receive a communication from the school back in April, I want to say. I could be wrong as far as that timing goes, but certainly more consistent with respect to the time that this application was originally received as far as the transfer is concerned. And we did try to respond to those questions back then. I believe it was from the principal, but I'd have to double-check those emails again to be sure. And I thought we did a pretty good job of answering those questions, which were more technical in nature if I remember correctly. As it relates to emails that I've gotten since that time, I haven't really received any emails. I have had a couple phone conversations, and again, answered questions primarily as to the technicalities relating to this, to this project.
And Carter, can you remind me too, when we, I know my memory's not that great, when we passed this, when we did the switch over and everything, was this summer, correct?
It was April.
Or April, when we did that?
Right, I would be inclined to say more of the April, May timeframe, Mr. Mayor.
Is when it was done, okay. The second part of it is, is that if we were to do any moving of ordinances to say bars within a certain limit or area or within schools, this could not affect this deal anyway, correct? Was that, is that a fair statement?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I do not believe the, that we would have the authority to retroactively require businesses to relocate pursuant to an ordinance that you would pass, say, in the next several months pertaining to a buffer type requirement. And so, I would suggest that that's not likely a reality that council should expect if indeed council decides to pass an ordinance that requires a buffer.
Thank you. And so, I wanted to answer, have those two questions answered for a couple reasons. One is that I'm a parent, I have kids that are in school, I know some others have their, so part of it is perception and understanding where everybody's coming from. And so, part of that is understanding how we perceive a threat, things that are happening. I do know that there are schools that are surrounded by bars or have bars close in proximity, maybe, I don't know, I'd have to look to see as if it's within 350 feet of that. What's that?
Nautrona County High School is surrounded.
And so, we would look at those things, and so, we do know that it's not setting a precedent that we will have a bar close to a school even within 300 feet. I think what we're faced with here is that parents that are concerned, and rightly so, I would do anything to protect my child, my children. And so, how do we address this so parents can feel safe when their child does go to school? Because this isn't going away, this establishment is going to be there, but the question is, is that how do we, as you walk out of here, feel that, how do we make this where you feel safe? And that I don't know, I don't know what that answer is. But I wanted to ask the question of, how do we move forward with that? And I don't know. And maybe Chief, I'm not going to have you come down here and continue to belabor this, although it does, the conversation shouldn't be just 10, 15, 20 minutes, this could be a longer conversation. So, I guess city manager, is this something that we could have a conversation of how we can, you know, relay the fears? I believe that the Johnson Group has a great track record, I know that they have a great establishments, I know Pete knows that, he's in the business, but I also want to make sure that we address. I have found, being on council for almost eight years, that it doesn't do any good to butt heads, but do better to have conversations and talk, and this is something that I hope the youth council understands, that we tend to butt heads in politics and government, but I think it's also more advantageous to have conversation and to figure out how we can move forward with that. So, I don't know, I'm open to suggestions if there's something that we can do to have a conversation with the school to allay their fears.
Thank you. One of the things you, we can do, and of course, it would be a retroactive situation, but if this starts becoming a problem, you know, it only takes a few complaints for us to look into something and see about changing it. You know, you have to look at it from our point of view. We're not just here to represent you folks and your children and our children. We also have another side of this that we represent, which is the owner who's putting in $2 million and making a beautiful building next to that school and supplying jobs and creating economic activity and sales tax. And so, for us, there's two sides, and we generally try to take emotion out of it because we are made to follow the law. That's what our job is to do, and this is within the parameters of that law. But one of the recourses you will have, I can tell you, and I do trust that John's doing the right thing there and building it right, but if problems arise, complaints can always be filed. They will be taken seriously, they will be looked at, and decisions could be made down the road based on things like that. Now, God help us if a child gets run over because somebody was drunk. Doesn't even mean they came from the back door. People that drive drunk, drive drunk, wherever they're coming from. So, I don't know, food for thought, keep an eye on things, and if things are happening that you're not satisfied with, please, by all means, file a report with the city manager or with one of your fellow council members, and we will follow up with it, and we'll see if we can't get this to work for everybody. But the last thing I want to remind you of is, and I'm, I have my PhD in divinity, I'm a God-fearing man, just like all of you folks are, that are sending your children to that school, and I would caution you to look at your cup half-full and not half-empty. We are projecting about a lot of bad things that can happen, and I'm telling you, you could walk out these doors tonight and somebody could run you over. We don't need to live in fear, we need to live in reality and give our blessings and pray and hope that everything comes out the way it should. And if things are, like I said, not going the way you want them to, you're welcome to reach out to any one of us or file a complaint, and we will follow up on it. But I just have a sneaking suspicion, knowing John and how he does business, this is going to work, your fears are going to be laid to rest, and I think it'll be just business as usual. We have so many schools just covered in bars. I mean, Shaun brought up earlier, and Nautrona County School is literally covered by them, and we just don't hear these kind of things much, so...
Councilmember Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. We received a letter just shortly before the meeting from a citizen that couldn't make it tonight, so I just wanted to kind of summarize what they had sent in their letter, because it, I'm kind of on the same wavelength, I guess, as them. And so, also, another concerned parent, not a concerned parent, a parent of a school-aged child at St. Anthony's, and also on the board, I believe, sent us a letter right before meeting, speaking to Mr. Johnson's character, as several other folks have done this evening, you know, stating that he had contributed to St. Anthony's School the last four years for their spring fundraiser, has been allowing the church and the school to use his parking lot that he maintains and pays for. And what I think is the most important point, at least for me, is that Mr. Johnson has complied with all zoning ordinances, statutes, he's abided by the law, and he's checked all the boxes. And so, I guess it's my opinion that it would be inappropriate for us as a governing body to, you know, I would agree. In this specific instance, I think our hands are tied. I don't think we are able to do much things, or that we should, because I think it would be inappropriate of us for a business owner who's checked all the boxes, who's done their due diligence, who has done everything that they were legally required to do, I think it'd be inappropriate for us to do anything. But I do think that this conversation, and from what we've heard from everyone, warrants maybe a future conversation about whether we should amend the ordinance to, you know, address this sort of issue going into the future. And so, I'm totally receptive to that, and I think it would be smart of us to do so. Mr. Napier responded to the city's responsibility to provide outreach to folks and notify them, and, you know, obviously, we had checked our boxes there as well. I don't think you can ever have too much outreach. I would love to see the city do more to provide outreach, and, you know, we can always be doing a better job at that. That said, as was discussed by the vice mayor, this was something that we, you know, approved or had in front of us back in April. I know Oil City News did an article about it. I, on my council Facebook page, recorded a video and talked at length about this project, and that was back in April. And so, I guess ideally, these are conversations that we would be having at the beginning of projects, not, you know, when Mr. Johnson's getting ready for the ribbon-cutting ceremony. That was seven months ago, you know? I would have loved to have had some more fleshed-out, detailed discussions about this specific instance much earlier in the year, and, you know, I get it, people are busy and lots of news articles, and so, it's easy to miss that stuff. But I would encourage you to maybe follow my council Facebook page. I try to get stuff like that on there, certainly read the local news, but any ideas for how we can amend the ordinance in the future as, geez, I forgot her name, Elizabeth, mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. So, I think that's a great suggestion, that maybe we should look at amending the ordinance to potentially include, you know, bar liquor establishment alongside gambling with the 300-foot proximity. So, I think we have some food for thought, I think there's some things that we're probably going to look at in the future. But again, in this specific instance, I just don't think we have the ability, or should exercise it, if we do, to change this. But I completely appreciate everyone coming, spending their time to give their input this evening, and totally empathize with you, I'm a daughter of a three-and-a-half-year-old, so I'm very much of the parental mind as well, super protective. But in this instance, you know, I would agree with many of the comments my colleagues have shared this evening. Thank you.
Okay. So, I would continue to have that conversation with St. Anthony's to make sure, I think, if there's issues and problems, to please let the city council know, your council member, the police, have that conversation. We heard you tonight, and we thank you for coming and expressing how you, your worries, and we did hear. Unfortunately, there's not much we can do at this point, I know a lot of people know that, but continue to have dialogue would be important. So, thank you. Ready? Please read the consent agenda title.
Establishing December 7th, 2021 is the public hearing date for consideration of a new restaurant liquor license number 46 for Movie Palace Inc. doing business as Studio City Mesa Cinemas located at 3150 Talon.
Chair to entertain a motion to, by minute, action, establish the public hearing date just read.
I'll move, second.
Moved by Councilmember Kathy, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Please cast your vote.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With Councilmember Pollock abstaining, and all others voting aye, motion passed.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of restaurant liquor license number 21 for Wheelin Catering Inc. doing business as House of Sushi located at 260 South Center.
Point of order. Didn't you say all members voted aye?
With Councilman, Councilmember Pollock abstaining.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yep, no, we're good, thank you.
Okay.
City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor, we have four exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flur Tremmel to Jay Carter Napier dated November 2, 2021. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated November 10, 2021. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication is published on the City of Casper website dated October 20, 2021. And exhibit number four, liquor license application filed October 7, 2021.
Thank you. City Managers, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We have a transition, if you will, with regard to the ownership as well as the name of the petitioner, in which case, the issuance of a new restaurant liquor license to the same needs to take place with respect to the statutes that direct this kind of activity. And so, with that, Mr. Mayor, our understanding is that the DBA will remain the same, and the address will remain the same, however, the name and ownership will be different.
Thank you. Council now listen to public comment, public hearing comments are now, are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of liquor license, restaurant liquor license number 21, to please approach the lectern. Those who wish to speak in favor. Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of the issuance of restaurant liquor license number 21, to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against the issuance of the restaurant liquor license number 21, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair to entertain a motion to, by minute, action, authorize the issuance of restaurant liquor license number 21.
I'll move, second.
Moved by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Kathy. Discussion. Amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmember Pollock having recused herself, and all others voting aye, motion passed.
We'll wait till Councilmember Pollock gets out here. Please read the consent resolution by title only.
Item 11A1, the acceptance of a grant from the Wyoming Department of Parks and Cultural Resources for the First Street Gateway Project. Item 11A2, contract with Proud to Host the Best to host the Wyoming High School Activities Association. Item 11A3, a contract with WSLC Engineering for the Industrial Avenue Drainage and Surfacing Project. Item 11A4, a contract with Casper Electric for the Ball Field Lighting Replacement Project. Item 11A5, a contract with State Line Number 7 Architects for the City Hall Project Safe. Item 11A6, a contract with Stephen Carter for Outside City Water Service. Item 11A7, a contract with WWC Engineering for the Poplar Street Utility Improvements Project. And item 11A8, a contract with Alpha Facilities Solutions for Citywide Facilities Condition Assessment.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Inga Bretson, seconded by Councilmember Pollock. Mr. City Manager, would you like to make any comments on any of these items? Thank you. Any abstentions or nay votes?
May I ask for clarification?
Sure.
Carter, just on two of these, the City Hall Safe State Line, did we not already have an architectural piece done for this building?
Mr. Mayor, I'm a little confused as to the point of order in this regard.
Oh, we can't have that conversation, it's consent resolution.
Well, and that's right, and technically, discussion is not a.
Not available, my bad, sorry.
But I'd be happy to visit Councilman Nell after, if that helps.
If you don't mind, yes. But I will be abstaining on that one and on the utility improvement engineering. I will abstain on both of those.
Any other nay votes or abstentions? Councilmember Pollock. Oh, okay. Anything? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmember Nell abstaining on items, I believe, number five and seven of this consent agenda, and all others voting aye, motion passed.
Thank you. Sorry, Carter, a little rusty on that. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 12A1, acknowledging a change in corporate ownership for Bar and Grill Number 11, doing business as The Horse Palace. Item 11, pardon me, 12A2, appointing Bob King to the Casper Historic Preservation Commission. And item 12A3, appointing four new members to Casper's Council of People with Disabilities.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action items just read.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Quest, yes, I got that one, perfect. Any abstentions or nay votes?
Abstain from 12A1, please.
Got that. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmember Pollock abstaining on the first item, and all others voting aye, motion passed.
Thank you. At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. We'll start with you, Councilmember Inga Bretson.
Nothing from me tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Nothing relevant tonight.
It's all perception. Councilmember Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a couple of things, forgot to mention last week, had a Casper Youth Council meeting two Sundays ago. We talked about many of their upcoming events and initiatives, including the Student Forum next Monday at Kelly Walsh, a great opportunity for high school-age students to take interest in the workings of the municipal government, as well as offer their perspective to us. So, looking forward to that, and thank you for the group joining us this evening. Had a DDA Board meeting last Wednesday. So, the previous council, last December, had worked out a debt forgiveness agreement with the DDA, which required them to raise $300,000 in private dollars. They did that in August, fulfilling the terms of that agreement. So, glad to see that. Also, folks might have seen recently, an anonymous donor made $100,000 contribution to that organization, so many, many thanks to that generous donor, as well as all the other donors who helped sustain the operations over there. If you've driven by, you may have seen they got the ice rink cooking, I believe it's all set up, and I don't think the tree's quite there yet, but getting there. I would like to thank the Chavez Medina family for their donation of the Christmas tree this year, as well as everyone else that donates services, putting up the ice rink, putting up the Christmas tree. It's expensive, it requires a lot of effort, and, you know, labor and time, and so, it wouldn't happen without generous donors in our community. Those would be Rodoff Brothers, Black Hills Trucking, Equipment Share, Total Oilfield Rentals, Gallus Greenhouse, and Custom Concepts. Thank you all for your donations of time and money. Looking forward to the Christmas parade and the tree lighting ceremony on the 27th. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Nell?
Thanks, sir. A few things, Joint Power Water Board meeting today. I will say, our chairman, who is from Midwest, was somewhat disappointed, very disappointed, actually, in the six-cent failing and giving us the ability to give water to our neighbors. I guess I just want to publicly state that if we had separated those, hindsight, of course, the Midwest Street project and that water line, I think they would have got their water. I watched Laramie do it, they passed 13 out of 14. So I think the powers that be should probably give our constituents a better opportunity to itemize these things so that we can get some of them passed next time. Just a thought. I want to thank all the parents that came out tonight. I know that is just a heart-wrenching, I have seven children, and when it comes to our kids, it's, it's just such a tough deal. And I, my heart goes out to them, I hope that everything goes as planned and that that project just works out the way it's supposed to. And then, lastly, since I'm never afraid to be confrontational or however you want to say it, my shirt tonight, Let's Go Brandon, is a, my way of saying, I don't agree with our president mandating with a swipe of a pen every single human being in this country and telling them what they can or can't do, whether you're a vaccine pro or not, it doesn't matter. Constitutionally, you should be able to make that decision for yourself, in my opinion. Secondly, I don't think he has any right to tell a private business owner how to run his business, and I'm totally against that. And lastly, he has all but killed our oil and gas production in our state where we get most of our money. And when I look at oil at $85 a barrel right now, we would be drilling to kingdom come, and our coffers would be full right now if he didn't have these restrictions on our federal lands. So, that's the reason for the shirt. I'm in politics, so I guess I took a side. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kathy?
I went to the same water board meeting today, very good water board meeting, and I guess I have to agree with Councilman Nell's shirt and the reasons for it. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Quest?
I'm good for tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Pollock?
Thank you. Just, just one small thing, after our conversation about the parks watering data presentation that we got, I think, last week, I saw some pretty good dialogue online about some ideas when it came to ways to save money there, zero escaping, pros and cons, you know, edible public areas, things like that. And so, I would just encourage folks to put some of those into a more formal submission, maybe by email or giving one of us a call, just in case. I mean, I obviously read the Facebook comments, but that's not typically how I get my input from citizens. So, if you have some ideas, I was really excited to see some really cool ideas come into the surface there. So if you have some ideas, please, on that or any other, you know, topic that we're discussing, please send those via email or give a phone call so that we can have a more robust discussion and have some more ideas at the table when we're talking about some of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have too much. Thank you for allowing me to run the meeting tonight. What's that? Didn't have much of a choice. It was, it was in the ordinance. So, to the Casper Youth Council that are here tonight, I know Councilmember Gamroth is the liaison, but I never take, I never, don't take an opportunity to talk to young people, especially when I see them here. So what you see tonight, obviously, is you see an opportunity where people came to express their opinions. The cool part about it is, is that I knew a lot of those people, and we may disagree, or we may disagree on how that goes, but I can still talk to them, and I can still shake their hand, and I can still be their friend. And I think that's something that we have sorely, sorely missed today. And so, the burden bears on your generation more than any other time for you guys to go forward and to create an environment, not only in government, but in just society, of decorum, respect, dignity, and justice. And I think that's one of the most important things to take away when you see these types of things. So, even though we may disagree, and there may be some hotness in how we do those things, it's critical that you understand too, that government functions, but that we can also disagree vehemently, but we can, but we can be friends, and we can shake hands and walk away with respect. So I hope that you weren't too bored, but it's one of the quicker meetings, but thank you for being here and continue to fight the good fight, okay? Thanks, guys. The next meeting of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, in the council chambers, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, in the council chambers. The chair to entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Gamroth, oh, wow, I'm sorry, okay, seconded by Councilmember Quest. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Can I share something with you guys after the meeting, or like, right now? Is that appropriate?